I can't do that. All right. I'll call you the orator, 75, something close to 5.
The citizens to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
First up we have the new citizens for Linda, who's in a car. Okay. We're going ahead then. First thing up we have some public hearing scheduled on the proposed fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget to provide an opportunity for citizens to come and tell me adopt the budget and rid of it out. So, this is our third go around. We proposed the budget two months ago. Last month we discussed it, public hearing. We've been changing any numbers, so we're back. No numbers are changed in the council packet from the previous two months. So, again, this is an opportunity for anyone on the floor if you have a question about a number, if you want clarification on a number, if you have any comments about a number, issue opportunity from the floor. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Okay. All right. Anyone want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to close the public hearing and I have a second to conclude. All those in favor? Okay. All right, next up we have a public hearing scheduled on the proposed property tax rate of 30 cents per 10 dollars, which is around, I perceive, a citizen's income. So, we have a public hearing of the tax rate, we had one again last month, same tax rate for the last 21 years, same number, year 41, our tax rate, so. Let's go to the center. The 5 cent on the debt servicing will continue. We have year four, as I've said in the mayor's letter, I think we will get rid of it in year eight. It's a 10-year note that we did, we had a schedule. We can start paying it off early, starting next year. We can make additional payments to pay off the debt. So, we'll cross that bridge next year. But, no change in the tax rate, same tax rate. That's sure. Go ahead, as a citizen, citizens told me once that they were kind of upset their tax bill had gone up. I said, "Okay." But, the reason why your tax bill went up is because the value of your house went up. So, think about Lake Village, I can't control the school. But, if your house goes up $100,000 in value, if your investment goes up $100,000, then you pay Lake Village $300. So, if I said to you, "Give me something worth $100,000," and you pay $300 for it, it's a pretty good deal. So, that's really what's going on here, is the values are going up, your investment in the city is becoming much more valuable. And so, you know, that's actually what's going on. So, you know, no one wants to pay more taxes, but it's for the right reason. In my view, that's a trade-off I'll make every day. If you want to pay $300 and you give me $100,000 worth of value, I'll take it. That's kind of what's going on. Does anyone have any questions about the tax rate?
I'll just go down there. So, the concern that in general conservative people have is that the amount of taxes that you're collecting is going to go up, even though the rates have changed. So, while from a budget standpoint, it's nice if the government stays to gain more money, it's still people's money. So, the really concern that I have is, are you running efficiently? In other words, you shouldn't need any more money year to year, you should use less money. So, as you continue to take the amount of money in, the government grows, the budget grows, that's the watch out that governments need to take care of.
The only argument to that is the fact that costs continue to increase. Wages continue to increase. So, that is obviously a detriment to your.
But the number of home owners is increasing too, which will increase that.
Excuse me?
We're increasing in the number of homes too, that should offset that.
Yeah, but I'm saying the cost of the city doing business, our contractors, our suppliers, things cost more money. So, just like your groceries, just like other things, they cost more.
Okay. So, right now, tax rate stays the same. So, what will happen is, the tax rate is embedded in the budget, and then next month we have to approve the tax rate. So, the tax rate is not up for approval at this meeting. We have to do things in a certain logical progression according to the state. So, but, the tax rate is embedded in the budget, and it's the same number as we talked about. Okay? Any more questions? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I have my motion, we close the public hearing on the tax rate.
Okay, I have a motion, so a second?
Second.
Okay. Two seconds. Okay. All those in favor? Okay, very good. All right, thank you. So, that is the public hearing. All right, next up we have the consideration of the MDD 2017, 2018 budget. The MDD met a couple of weeks ago and passed their budget. It's a pretty conservative budget. Right now, I've talked with Eric Farahs, who is the president of the MDD. And, basically, what they're doing is, they've made some conservative estimates, and they're setting aside $10,000 potentially for a project that they have not yet decided what it's going to be, as far as I know. They'll let us know. But that's it. I don't see any of the budget that's out of line. It's all pretty much lines up with what they've done in the past. The water system makes a profit. Sales taxes continuing to climb, just like with the city. They have no debt. They actually have about, last time I checked, they have somewhere in the neighborhood of about $10,000 in the bank. So, they're accumulating funds now in their debt fund. Okay? So, that is the MDD budget. Linda, Linda sits on the MDD, I don't think, Daryl is on the MDD, right? So, we have Daryl, we have Linda. Do you two have anything else to add?
I don't think.
Can't think of anything. It's pretty easy to do.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the MDD budget?
I have a motion on the budget.
Approved.
Approved.
Approved. Okay, I have a motion to approve the MDD budget.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor? Okay, very good. MDD budget's approved. All right, next up we have consideration of the 17, 18 budget. All right, same numbers as we got the last two months. I didn't change any numbers. We have the final numbers in from decaf. The final numbers came in, basically, it's about a 7% increase year-on-year is the decaf numbers. So, again, that's based on appreciation. My number up 40%, so I feel pain. But, numbers haven't changed, same numbers as last time. CapEx numbers, we're looking now, we put 75 in there. One of the things for the capex was the new wait, listation issue. We now think we've resolved that, we'll be able to do that less expensively. So, that's a good sign. We're trying to put in some new sensor platform and new electronics, and we think we can get a way to do it cheaper than what we have in the budget. That's that. The other thing for capex project there was the, was putting in another fire hydrant in Parkwood. Clint, can you pull that up? So, this is something, it got left out of the council packet. So, back in 2014, what we did was, we had to start looking ahead for the concrete streets. And one of the things that we did was, there were only three fire hydrants in this part of town. In the whole, in the five streets, there were only three hydrants. Closest hydrant for most of the area over here was actually in Sunrise Bed, which is not a good plan. So, the problem with the fire hydrant is, it's got to be on a six-inch line. You can't put a fire hydrant on a four-inch water line, it's got to be on a six-inch water line. So, the blue line up here at the top, and we were doing this, this was before the concrete roads, this is 2014, right before we started doing the bidding on the road, was this blue line here for Lake Crest, outside of this window, that whole street there was serviced by a two-inch line, which is the same size of line that services my house. It was the whole line on this entire street. So, that main went out, we had to put in a six-inch main along here, we put in these three fire hydrants. And we started.
It was even worse than that if you were on the north side of those, because you shared the connection with your neighbor.
And then they also took the line that was onto the street and split it. So, they only put in half as many lines under the street to get to the other side, and then you shared the water. So, it was so often. So, what we tried to work out was, in order to put in and hydrate that whole side of town, to make it now meet code, modern code, we had to install a six-inch line in places because you can't put it, it's got to be on a six-inch line. And the problem is, we don't have a lot of six-inch line in town. The six-inch line runs along hillside, this was the main, main, main for the city. For some reason, they chose hillside. And of course, we had Shoreline. So, we started, we extended under the streets, these ones here, trying to get some things in order. But this was part of our big plan, to hydrate the rest of the town over here. So, Clint, could you go to the next sheet? So, this was the plan. These are the places where all the fire hydrants were going to go, all of them in mid-block. And we're going to have to put in all new six-inch line in various places. So, we've done all these here, we've done all of these here, we've done these here. This is what we're talking about now, is doing this area right here. In order to do the mid-block one here, we have to go under some driveways. So, we're working on it, because we're not going to saw the driveways. But, there's no six-inch line on Peninsula. So, we're working on, trying to come up with that. The easiest one for us right now to do is, Parkwood here has no fire hydrants at all. There's only a street in the city that doesn't have a single one. That's inexcusable. You can't have a street in a modern city that has no fire hydrant running at all. So, in this plan, we're talking about, does this fire hydrant already exist? This is what we're talking about now, is doing this one right here in this budget section. And so, we've hit 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. I think this would make 10 out of the 14 that would be done. Oh, 11, so we got 11 out of 14. This was the long-range plan. This is what was approved back in 2014. Obviously not to put them all up, but that was the plan that was approved. Part of this also analogously, later on in the meeting, we're going to talk about dark skies. That's part of this kind of same kind of way-ahead planning, before the concrete roads come in, trying to think way out there, and trying to figure out some way to advance. So, that's the capex on the budget. No other number changed in the entire budget. So, as far as, I know from Linda, no one in the last two months has made any data requests or looked at any historical data or requested any data. So, does anybody want to change a number? Last, same as I asked last month. If not, then I'd like a motion that we approve the budget. Does anybody want to change anything?
You and I met with Julie Arm, and the numbers that we had in there are still good, so there's no need to change any of those.
Yep, so we did check with the engineering, that looks good. Like I say, this 75 is probably high, but that's okay. That's a worst-case scenario. We're going to commit it. Okay?
Are we considering that where the city's going to have to do, whether it's a rollback or a rollback?
Yeah, the tax rate?
Yes.
No, no, they're not. If you look at the, I'm sorry, is the cover sheet in there, Linda?
Yeah, I think I have the one. Can you go to the spreadsheet?
Yeah, back to the, yeah. Okay, so the ordinance itself, where is this?
The ordinance itself, or?
Go to the ordinance itself, I think it's page 3. Go back up where Linda was.
Okay. So, what these things here are, so, what this works is, is this number right here, it's hard to read, the effective tax rate?
Yes, right.
Is, the effective tax rate is, what would the tax rate need to be in order for you to generate exactly the same number of dollars as last year? So, if your, if your houses are increasing in value, then that would be the tax rate. So, our tax rate, this is maintenance and operations, it's the 25 cents. So, if we want to generate the exact same amount as last year, we would lower the tax rate to 23 and 1/2 cents. That would generate dollar for dollar, precisely the same amount of dollars as last year. The rollback rate is, if you take the same people as this, as last year, and you add 8% to their, to the taxes, if you collect 8% more taxes in the total, in the aggregate, 8% more, that's what that tax rate is, 28 point, let's see, where am I looking at? Where did it go?
Where did it go?
Where's rollback? Where's rollback?
It's on the bottom.
I can't read it. Okay.
Can everybody count that? Let me just.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time reading it, because it's so dark. Okay. So, this rollback rate is, if you add 8% to the tax base, if you get 8% increase in total dollars collected, then that's what your rate would be if you got 8% more. Now, if our tax rate was higher than that, you can still do it. If you're above the rollback rate, if you get more than 8% more money than the year before, the citizens can file a petition and say, "We want to roll the rate down." So, you only get 8% more, you want to roll it down. There's almost never, ever, ever a rollback election, because if you get the signatures, the city council says, "Okay," and they lower it back down to the 8%. They don't want to have an election, especially because they know they're going to probably lose. Who's going to vote yes, right? So, that's the rollback rate. That's the 8% increase, okay? So, typically, as long as you're between the two, then you're good, because you're somewhere more money than what you had last year, but not 8% more. That's the sweet spot. But there are cities around that have a lot of growth that end up growing faster than 8% because their houses are going up and down. And then they face that issue, that's some of the areas that are east of us. And they face the question, do you, do you keep the tax rate the same, but get 8%, get 10% more money, keep the tax rate the same, or do you actually lower your tax rate? We don't have that question here.
Okay, so we're not at that point?
No, we're below the rollback rate. So, typically, you just want to be between those two.
Yes, I just learned that last week.
There you go. Now, for us, the issue that makes the wrinkle a little bit for us is that, we have 5 cents of debt servicing. We have 5 cents to cover our debt. Our debt is actually 18 cents. Should be 18 there. Okay? That should be an 18, but we don't, we're keeping it 5. The 13 that's missing comes out of that 25. So, yes, it's, we're getting more money, but we're not getting it, we're actually getting back to where we were, right? We took a big hit on our operating money to pay the debt. We're paying the debt with regular money, okay? If that makes any sense. Our tax rate, if we were a normal city, would be 43. It would be 18 of tax money on top of the 25. That's what every city in the metroplex would do except Lake Village. We don't do that. We keep it as low as we can. So, that's the 5. So, ours is a little bit different. We have to do a special tax calculation every year with the taxing people, because they want to make that number 18, and I have to tell them, "No, put it back to 5." Does that make sense? Okay. But, this is the, this is the calculation. This is what the legislature now, they're arguing over whether that 8% should be a 4%. That's the argument about there. At what point should you not be allowed to collect more money? That's, that's the raging debate going on in the legislature. Let's see what happens. Okay?
So, can we go to the total sheet here? So, the concern I have is the same on various levels, couple of months, is that we're estimating the 2017, take in 415, 416. We're estimating 2018, we're going to take in 446. So, 30, 40,000, a little bit more. In the mayor's letter, we say that today we have in the bank 248,000. We expect to have over 350,000 until we build up reserves for the roads. So, there's a $100,000 difference going into the roads, resets the impression that we plan. When we look at this budget, we're not putting any money towards the roads. If we are, I think it'd be great. A hundred grand towards the roads, I think we'd be right about where we need to be. But I don't think that's in here, and I think that's probably the first item we should start off with, is saving some money for the roads which are collected.
Can we add a line item that just says that we're saving this amount of money towards the roads, so it's visible, instead of just saying whatever's left over, that's what's going to go towards the roads?
Sure. When you're figuring the budget on the worksheet and all that, aren't you just taking each of those items out, one for the water system, one for the roads, all that? So, on that 350,000, how's that divided out?
There's 12 different accounts, it's all divided.
Well, I understand, there's 12, but I mean, it's a simple, I mean, we have so many expenses in the city to do. If you've got a budget, you take those out, whatever's left over is your property, or you're operating, but.
Yeah, I mean, but if we, if.
What's on the page is the reserve fund?
Here's, here's how we operate here, okay? If you want to put a line that says, "Road reserve, 100," that's fine, but then you've got to put the bank accounts in there. In other words, you can't, if you can't put a, you can't put a line here that says 100 on it, because that's then going to mean we're 84,000 in the red.
Well, I wouldn't say 100, but I would put, I'm not saying 100,000, I'm just saying, can we put a line item and agree to an amount that may be conservative, that we know that we can achieve towards that reserve fund? And we don't, I don't think you have to put the entire bank account number, I think you can X out and maybe put two or three digits of it?
No, 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 okay. Here's, here's the idea. This, this budget here is in versus out. It's in and out. It's how you're balancing the money in with what goes out.
Right, it's a difference.
Now, yeah, it's, it's, it's a flow. It's flow in and flow out. Now, the reserve money that we have, we have 200 and something thousand dollars in the bank, that's over here in the bucket. Now, if you want to take that bucket and put it on this, then we've got to take all the money in the bank and put that in here and say, "This is money that's at play." We have, so, on the budget, here's 142,000 in the general fund that's starting up on the top line. Then on the bottom line, you say, "Roads, road reserve, 160,000." And the 16 would be the additional amount from the start to the bottom. You, you're mixing, you can't mix the two things together, you either have.
How can you not mix them? If you're, if you've got a total amount, if you've got 250,000, and we're taking out 20,000 for this, 20,000 for this, 20,000 for this, what do you have left over? That, I mean, that's how you create a budget. What we're saying is.
I actually wrote down the budget, Brent, I actually teach, so, I got it, okay?
Let's line one thing here and all that stuff. This is not me against you and all that, this is a city, and this is a city where we're coming in and we're discussing.
Look, I'll tell you what, okay? If you want to talk, you raise your hand, okay? We're talking.
I'm not a student. I'm a citizen that pays taxes in this city.
If you have something to say, you can raise your hand, and then I'll recognize you. Okay, now, we're talking to Elizabeth, who asked a question, can you put it in?
It's very valid, that's the question I'm asking.
Now, if you want to put it in there, you, you've got to pick which way you want to do it. So, many years ago, what we used to do is, we used to put starting balance of cash on the, on the top line. And I can show you budgets from before I was here. There was a starting cash budget. And at the end of the year, the final answer was zero, they balanced the budget, which meant, they were going to end the year with zero dollars in the bank. That was, made no sense. So, we could put the starting balance of the cash bank account, it would be like the line above all of this, starting balance, hundreds and 20,000.
I follow your thoughts.
Then below the 16, you'd say, ending balance, 136. That's, that's what you would do. I love that you asked the question, wasn't it?
I mean, why wouldn't we, why, why can't we do that, though? I understand we have to put it up here, what the beginning balance is, but then if down here, we put a reserve line item, and, you know, it's, we know that that money's going to go to our reserve, because anything else that we may put aside for that year.
In other words.
The surplus is going to the reserve.
I mean, if we, all of our money, okay, so.
It's not going to the red.
Our, our bank account is set up, that is our reserve. So, for instance, we have to keep a reserve on hand that covers three months worth of operations. That is standard, that's a standard way to do it in taxes, because we collect our taxes in December, our fiscal year ends in September. So, you're supposed to always have in the bank, October, November, December, three months worth of stuff in the bank. So, for instance, if we're, of our expenses, our operating expenses are 214, so that means the auditor's going to come back and say, "You should have about $60,000 in the bank." That represents three months' worth of your expenses. You should have a reserve fund sitting there with at least $60,000 in it. Now, anything above that is good. That's why at one point, we had gotten that up to like $600,000, right before we did the other concrete roads. We kept building it up, building it up, building it up. We didn't say it's for concrete roads, we said it's our reserve fund. Obviously, it was for concrete roads, that's why we built it up, but we didn't put a line that said, "Concrete road reserve." That was what we did.
Okay. So, if, for some reason, we have to use that reserve for other than the roads, then it's really not designated for the roads, it's for whatever contingency happens, right?
Yeah.
That we need to take care of.
The whole thing about reserves is that, you could say it's for the road, but basically, that doesn't mean anything. Unless you, unless you say, "This money is restricted," okay? There's no difference in the orders we tell you between earmarking something or dedicating it, even if it doesn't mean anything. You're just basically saying to a layman, "We intend to use this on something, but it's not binding, we can use them on anything we want, because it's not legally restricted." So, that's where, like, our road fund, our road fund that we have to do repairs.
Right.
That's our internal thing, we've, we've agreed to use it for. Legally, it's not binding, that's why the auditor doesn't keep it separate. The auditor folds it into cash, because it's, it's not legally restricted, it's just an internal thing. So, the thing about the roads is that, obviously, we're going to, we're going to try and get money going to do the roads. Now, the reason why I said it was going to go up, I believe in the mayor's letter, 100,000, is because we're going to sell the lot. We're going to, we're going to replat that lot, hopefully it's sell, I think it'll sell quickly. That's one way that we're going to suddenly get a big joke in, in the money. But I'm not going to put on a budget, property sale, 100,000. I didn't want to put that on there for next year, because they don't have, we're conservative, right? So, that's where in the mayor's letter, I think our cash is going to go up, because of that sake. So.
So, let me, as a student here. So, explain to me how we figured the budget. How, how did you sit down and figure, "Okay, here's what we're putting for the roads, here's what we're putting for the sewer system, the water system, you've got this lot that you're selling," all that stuff? How did y'all figure that?
It's like a completely full set.
Well, I, I mean, as a business owner, I, I know how we do it and all that stuff, but right here.
We do.
You have an imaginary number that, or not imaginary, you have a total number.
Was it the number three, nine, or 10?
I'm sorry.
Look, the other two sessions weren't at.
I, I've watched all this, and I'm not ignorant of what's going on on this, I'm asking a basic question.
We go through the numbers.
You want the citizens here to.
Hold on, hold on, one of the time.
Your answer? Okay. There's five numbers that are discretionary in the entire budget. Most of the numbers are.
There's not five numbers, just because you put some in green and some in yellow, doesn't mean those are discretionary.
There's five numbers that are discretionary in the budget. We go through the numbers, I make estimates of what I think the numbers are going to be. I present them to the council, they look at the numbers, we make any adjustments that they think high, low, up, down, we make adjustments. That's how the budget works.
So, how are the greens not, why are the greens not allowed to change?
I make a stab at the budget, I make estimates of every line item on the budget. I present the budget.
No, no, it's, I ask a simple question. Why are the greens not allowed to change? We keep, we keep jumping around the different things. The simple question, why are the greens not allowed to change?
I make a budget, I give it to the council. I make a budget, I give it to the council. Now, listen to what I'm saying. The council looks through all the numbers. The council then makes any changes they want on any number they want. They can change any number on that holder. They can change any number, they look through every single number. We talk about every line on there, they can make a change on any number they want. That's what we do.
So basically, what you do is you look at historicals, which you historically spent for water, or sewer, or maintenance of, I don't know, just different line items. You look at historical data for the last two or three years, and you estimate, and you give yourself a cushion of margin of error, or a cushion for growth.
So, there's the budget numbers, we go up in the budget numbers, yeah, and that's, that's where we're at.
So you're fixed?
Yeah, so, let me just clarify, so you can see it. That's, Mayor Lawrence's interpretation, what cannot be changed, that's, that's not, we don't agree, not all of us agree about it.
Where, where this phrase "can't be changed" from?
What do you want to change? For the last three months, for the watch of the spend, what do you want to change?
Well, you started at the last council meeting by saying, "The ones in the green are not allowed to change."
That's why I did not say it, you're a liar. I did not say it.
You almost said something, and you called me a liar, so you might go watch it.
You know, let me go on the video and watch it again.
Oh, come on, you guys.
Yes.
So, let's...
Did it with the final answer, is that how it was just...
All right, let's get back to the mission at hand. Does anybody want to change a number in the budget?
Yes, I, I absolutely would like to have a budget workshop, go line by line.
What number would you like to change?
I would like to go line by line, and start with the roads, and say, "How much money are we putting?"
We went line by line, we asked that.
Come up one person at a time. So, man, we're here, this is a workshop, what number, on what road do you want to talk about right now?
So again, what I'm suggesting is, we go through every single one of those. And we can start with the easy ones, we can start with the travel, we can start with continuing education, we can start with town functions.
No, which one do you want to start with, we're sitting here?
I want to start with, how much are we putting away for the roads? Pick a number, 100, 120, 130, start with that, and go backwards.
So not travel, you want to talk about savings? Which one do you want to start with? It was travel, it was continuing education, now saving for the road, which one do you want to start with?
We can go in that order, so roads.
Okay. What line do you want? You want me by line?